I'd like to call the September 8, 2025 Hilliard City Council Regular Meeting to order. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the Flyer of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation undergone invisible liberty and justice for all.
Dee, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Betts is excused. Mr. Carrier?
Here.
Ms. Cole?
Here.
Ms. Hale?
Here.
Vice President Teeter?
Here.
Ms. Vermillion?
Here.
President Cottone?
Here.
Council has copies of the August 25, 2025 Special Executive Session and Regular Meeting Minutes and the September 4, 2025 Special Executive Session Meeting Minutes. Are there any changes or corrections? Hearing none, these minutes stand approved. We will go into Commission and Board Reports. Board of Zoning Appeals Greg Betts, not here. Destination Hilliard Cynthia Vermillion.
We meet next week, and we just had an activity for the love of Hilliard over the weekend, and it looked like it was pretty well attended.
Thank you. Environmental Sustainability Cynthia again.
We meet on Wednesday.
Thank you. The still absent Greg Betts for Keep Hilliard Beautiful. Planning and zoning Emily Cole.
We meet on Thursday.
Public Arts Commission, that's me. We met last Tuesday and walked away with a decision that we would have our next meeting at the well because the commission wants to look into art for the well, both inside and out. And Recreation and Parks Advisory Committee Peggy Hale.
The well opens on the 18th. Hope to see everyone there. Super exciting.
Thank you. Aging and Place Committee, that's me. We meet tomorrow. Okay, special guests. This is National Service Dog Month, and for that, we have a proclamation that I will read. Whereas the city of Hilliard believes in inclusiveness for all community members and in the joyful transformative power of the human canine bond, and whereas in the United States, 70 million adults and children have a disability and only 16,000 service dogs from accredited training programs exist nationwide, and less than 1% of individuals with disabilities who could qualify have a service dog, and the need is growing. And whereas service dogs are specially trained to perform tasks that assist individuals with disabilities, helping them achieve greater independence, safety, and confidence, or are trained to work alongside law enforcement officers to help protect our community, detect danger, and support public safety, and whereas both service dogs and canine officers demonstrate loyalty, courage, and dedication, providing invaluable assistance in improving the quality of life for those they serve. And whereas National Service Dog Month provides an opportunity to recognize the vital role of these working dogs, raise awareness of their contributions, and honor the handlers, trainers, and organizations who prepare and support them. Now therefore I, Tina Cottone, President of Hilliard City Council, and on behalf of City Council, do hereby proclaim the month of September as National Service Dog Month in the city of Hilliard, and encourage all residents to join in recognizing and honoring the extraordinary service and sacrifice of these remarkable dogs and their handlers. And we have a presentation tonight for the dogs.
Uh-oh, here we go.
Because if we want to see, we have to move on.
This is K9 Art. So, we'll do here tonight to do those, um, protection demonstration and then, uh, I'm also kind of, um, Ben Robert, I'm here, uh, already doing my part for the last, uh, I did hear, um, about French, some part of English, as in France, and teaching everything with one of the years, so, and good, all this stuff, and then they were just me, uh, so, like this, a few things that these can do, this sort of part of alone, um, a lot of things I didn't know until I actually began to be an officer. Um, one of the others is detection, so, any kind of products that we train them on, called part of odor, which we have another actual training box, and what you'll see is, first, this demonstration, one of these boxes have, has a national partner, and he'll go and he'll work for it, sit, and now give the award, everything he does, that all you can see, and, um, it's not really anything against anyone, or against odors whatsoever, her, our colleagues, so, even if it's a, you know, her, who does it have, and it's not basically just to give them the award or the money. So, um, one of the other things we do with them is, we can send them in and locate people. Uh, Thursday, when we, we see us out doing practice tracks, a lot of this, park, you ever seen me walk around here, and not just wait, they come and actually, uh, they're walking with the purpose of hurting, or actually, so, we do that as well with line people, and then one thing a lot of people also do, or you have a search, um, and what that is, say someone breaks into the place, uh, well, they got a tool, they got whatever, um, even, there's a few days in bullet cases, um, there are clients, especially the best, um, who, so, I helped learn about issues, uh, that you then, someone blood from the place, that was also bringing along, seeing time that you make, you make, you didn't call the person, a lot of times we'll pass out, so, maybe following, um, but, um, we were definitely, where is, uh, people are, but, um, you can do very proficient, so, hopefully this will be, and, uh, we'll do this real quick. I see. So, that's enough. So, what we'll do, these, these boxes, people kind of wonder, like, why do we have these? These are the additional odor recognition classes, I guess you'd say, for visual improvement. So, we'll set these out, um, so, they'll set out one, they're just one, right, and they understand that, hey, like, do the proper, um, you know, sit and actually work to it, uh, people often, but they get their hole, and then, we can actually hide the holes in the room, and they'll find it, it's not just a box, so, that makes sense, but we're demonstrating, uh, um, it's a little bit, so, quick. I never want to go back. So, a lot of times it's social, and, uh, so, we'll stay at this door. Through, through it. Uh, oh, easy. Okay. So, that's what we're trying to create ideas, but, a lot of us, because, if they can, you know, they're kind of stressed of wanting so much in their life, and they're just having a whole, and you're like, that, eating your own, so, others can, if anyone has any questions, sir. Do you have a big social dog, uh, our goal is to get, you know, is a dog, 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 and, uh, we want to do social dogs, so we can do events like this, um, a lot of things that people think about, whether they're dog friends, or something like that, so, we want them to have a good home life as well, so they're not just, you know, outside, they're actually in the house for us. So, he's my shadow, I spend more time with him than anyone, by far. Uh, he, he's seven, twelve, what does he retire? I'm hoping he's, uh, maybe, maybe he would not.
Is he going up your fence with you?
He's always, uh, yeah, try to land.
Thank you so much.
I just want to hire a chair, this is lower. Whoever sits in his chair, P and Z gets alone.
Oh, boy.
Excellent. Hi, thank you so much for having us. My name is Melissa McCracken. I'm one of the volunteers from Canine Companions. We are a national service dog organization providing service dogs to people with disabilities around the country, and we provide those to people free of charge. So I have a series of volunteers with me today. Debbie and I are both non-dog handling volunteers. Sharla is a volunteer puppy raiser. So we have volunteer puppy raisers, raise our puppies from the time they're born to the time they're 15 months, 18 months, about a year and a half. Then the dogs come to one of the Canine Companions Training Centers for the whole Northwest, North Central region. Our training center is located in New Albany, and they train there for six months with the staff trainers before being matched with their person with a disability. We also have Pam here today. She's a facility dog handler, so her dog goes to work with her and helps her with her clients every day. So Pam works at Easter Seals with her dog Tank. Thank you so much for honoring September as Service Dog Month. It really helps us raise awareness for service dogs and service dog users.
Thank you. I have a dog named Tank, and he's only seven pounds. Different tank.
Let us know if you have questions about Canine Companions or service dogs. Also, if you wanted to learn more, come to the Training Center in New Albany on September the 21st for Dog Fest. I have some flyers that I can give to Dee.
Where's my treat?
Okay, we have one more proclamation tonight. It's a bit of a surprise. We have our State Representative Crystal Lett that has a proclamation.
Thank you, President Cottone, Councilman Teeter. It is good to see you. I wanted to stop by tonight. It's not so much of a proclamation, but a letter of condolence from the Franklin County Delegation of the Ohio House on behalf of the passing of your mother Dorothy. Just wanted to come by, give this to you, commemorate this in your official capacity. Thank you for sharing your mother with all of us. Her legacy is one that so many people, and especially women in Franklin County in politics and in the city of Columbus and beyond, have been influenced by her. So I just, I know what it's like to have children that have to share their time with the rest of the general public, so thank you for your family's sacrifice. Thank you for carrying on her legacy of public service and sharing your gifts now with the city of Hilliard. So, wanted to present this to you and just to send our deepest condolences from the Ohio House of Representatives.
Thank you, Representative Lett. Okay, now down to the black and white business. Here we go. Are there any changes to the agenda tonight?
President, excuse me, President Cottone, I would request that the agenda be changed to add before adjournment an executive session for conferences with an attorney for the public body concerning pending litigation.
Okay, thank you. We've all heard Mr. Boggs' request. I would entertain a motion in a second to add an executive session at the end of this meeting with no business to follow for matters pertaining to conferences with an attorney for counsel concerning disputes involving counsel that are the subject of pending or imminent court action, Charter Section 2.101(c).
So moved. Second.
I'll second, thank you.
Thank you. Dee, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
President Cottone?
Yes.
Ms. Vermillion?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Vice President Teeter?
Yes.
Agenda's been amended.
Okay, thank you. Consent agenda. We have one item on the consent agenda, which is a new D5 liquor permit for 5460 Franklin Street, Sexton's Pizza. No objections were received from staff, and approval means we do not request a hearing on this request. Would anyone like to move this item to the regular meeting under council discussion? Okay, then I will entertain a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. Second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. All right, this is the public portion of the meeting. Has anyone signed up to speak on any subject that is not on the agenda, or is there anyone in attendance who wishes to speak that did not get a chance to sign up?
Yes, ma'am, you have the list in front of you. There was one gentleman that's signed in.
I do, thank you. Anthony Schoenfeld, would you please come forward? Anthony, please state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
Hello again. My name is Anthony Schoenfeld, 3065 Golden Oak Drive, and once again, I'm up here to talk about parking. The pesky thing that everybody seems to want for shops, and ultimately, in Chapter 1127, uh, it, it just provides wasteful parking, minimum parking requirements that just adds more, uh, empty space to Hilliard, and once again, I implore that this council entertains a motion to do something about it, change it, I don't know, reduce it, remove it, anything. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schoenfeld. All right, we'll move into the, excuse me, we'll move into the business of council. We have two second readings. Dee, will you please read Ordinance 25-21 by title only?
Amending Section 1191.01 of the city's codified ordinances to reflect changes to the city's acceptance of performance bonds.
This is the second reading public hearing on this ordinance. Has anyone signed up to speak, or is there anyone in attendance who would like to speak who did not sign in?
I have no one signed up, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Does council have any further questions? Okay, Dee, will you please call the roll?
President Cottone?
Yes.
Ms. Vermillion?
Yes.
Vice President Teeter?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Pass 60.
Thank you. Ordinance 25-21 has passed and will be in effect at the earliest date allowable by law. Dee, will you please read Ordinance 25-22 by title only?
Rezoning 1.185 plus or minus acre of land located at 3600 Main Street from B3 Office Institutional District to LB2 Community Business District with a limited overlay to reduce the number of permitted uses.
This is the second reading public hearing on this ordinance. Has anyone signed up to speak?
I have no one signed up, ma'am.
Thank you. Are there any questions? For John. All right, thank you. Dee, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Ms. Vermillion?
Yes.
President Cottone?
Yes.
Vice President Teeter?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Pass 60.
Ordinance 25-22 has passed and will be in effect at the earliest date allowable by law. That's the last of the second readings. We'll move on to first readings. Dee, will you please read Ordinance 25-23 by title only?
Rezoning 1.284 plus or minus acres of land located at the northeast corner of Roberts Road and Alton Darby Road from R1 Low Residential, Low Density Residential District to HCD Hilliard Conservation District.
Would a council member like to sponsor in second?
Second.
Okay, John?
Good evening, members of council. So this proposal is to rezone four parcels that total just over an acre, and the idea is to eventually roll them into, um, the Alton Place HCD. So, but this is just the first step to, in order that to happen, has to be rezoned to the HCD district, and then a subsequent application will come before planning, commission, and council will be to revise the Alton Place HCD to add this as a portion of the subarea with any text modifications that are necessary, but it's just the first step, actually get it to that zoning classification. And we're recommending approval, thinking it will be a suitable addition to the HCD ultimately. Do you have questions about that?
Any questions, Cynthia?
Yes. I have some really major concerns about a gas station, especially in the Darby Accord area. Gas stations in general present an environmental hazard. Columbia University study that talks about gasoline vapors being, you know, extremely toxic and can affect people for hundreds of feet from the location of the gas station. In addition, even though storage tanks, I guess, have been improved over the years, there's multiple points where the transfer of fuel can actually leak between tanker trucks, storage tanks, vehicle tanks, so just a few little spills here and there can affect the environment quite a bit. I did run across a statistic, and this is from a news story, so I, I'm not exactly sure what the source was, but even a dribble can pollute a wide area. It stated 10 gallons of gasoline can contaminate 12 million gallons of groundwater. That's a lot. So, the fact that this is in an area where we do have people taking their water from the ground, and it's all going into a delicate ecosystem, I, I have a problem with making an exception for that gas station there.
My understanding was a previous council already approved a gas station. This is not adding a new one. Is that correct?
Correct. So there's already a, a service station, an automobile service station, whether it's a gas station, or an oil change facility, or a car repair place. One of those is permitted in the Alton Place HCD south side of Roberts Road. Reason why we're supportive of getting this site into the HCD and in that same subarea is it would at least move the gas station, if one comes across Alton Darby Road, at least further away from the stream. Yes, one is, one is permitted there currently on the west side.
Is the location where it's currently permitted, that is also in the watershed? Is that correct?
Yes.
Does the new location, is that further out of the wa, do you see what I'm trying to ask you?
Yeah, it's farther, it's
Further inward?
This site that's, this site that's proposed to be rezoned is farther from the Hamilton Ditch.
Okay.
It's on, it's a, it's on the east side of Alton Darby Road, and the rest of the Alton Place is on the west side. So it's at least that right away width away from the, from the, farther from the Hamilton Ditch.
Thank you.
John, to be clear, so
In order, yeah, well, in order for this to be incorporated into the Alton Place HCD, our recommendation is going to be to keep the text stating that one is permitted, and if it ends up being on the east side of the road, then none are permitted on the west side.
John, how many acres is the Darby Accord? How many miles of land? It's huge, right?
It's, yeah, it's huge.
You think there's gas stations in other places within the Darby Accord?
You have one.
Yeah, we have others, right? Does EPA require any special requirements with the gas stations for handling of fuel or anything like that?
That I don't know. I don't know what goes into their permit if it's different than a non-gas station site plan.
Thank you.
Any, Cynthia?
Well, I think, I think another factor in the packet, that that location doesn't meet the minimum tract size, and I know that you're looking at the land across the street to help offset that, I guess. So, that location doesn't even meet the size requirement, is that right?
The minimum acreage requirement, yeah, normally, the minimum acreage requirements we have for like a PUD or an HCD, yeah, are usually larger than that. There have been, the code does allow council to include that, or rezone them to that if they think it's better for the overall plan, especially particularly this one where it's right next to one. Landmark Lofts is another example that was, didn't meet the acreage requirements, but because of the, the plan being consistent with what's recommended in the comprehensive plan, it was viewed as appropriate for the PUD zoning. That's just an example, but this would be, this would be something that you would have to, that would be a, a point that would have to be made during the rezoning or development of it.
I, I think Councilman Carrier asked a good question about, shouldn't we be finding out if the EPA has any additional requirements for these kinds of businesses in a delicate watershed?
Are you asking me that?
Yes, yes, I am.
Should we be asking the EPA?
Should we not be aware of what, what the EPA requires, if anything, of these kinds of businesses in a delicate watershed?
I suppose we could. I mean, there's a lot of things that we don't know about what the EPA requires in terms of certain permitting, but, because it's their purview, but, I mean, we can always find out more. Yeah, we're always interested in finding out as much as we can, but that's not our purview, but, um, the things we have to look at are what's the plans that we have that have been approved, that we compare proposals with, not the EPA plans, but our plan. But I mean, it's helpful information if you have it.
Yeah, thank you.
Andy?
John, I'm curious, why are we proposing, did the developer bring this change to us?
Yes. So, um, yeah, the proposal came to us, and then the only, one of the reasons why it was, uh, I think worth discussing was this idea of getting the gas station or the auto it was, I think, worth discussing was this idea of getting the gas station or the auto service use on the other side of Alton Darby Road.
I agree with that, but what, do we know what his motivation is for wanting to move it?
Well, I think it was, I think the gas station convenience stores reached out initially. I don't know that for sure, but it sounded like, because we had a couple call us and ask about the property. And it's small in terms of its acreage, but this is the process that they would have to go through to realize that.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Andy.
I'm sorry, just to be clear, and then this, this will all have to go through P and Z and back to us again.
Yes, so this-
Proposal?
Yeah, this application did not go to the Darby Accord panel because there's no plan to show them. So what we instead are doing is, the Darby Accord panel gets to review it when there's a rezoning or development plan or a subdivision. So we thought it more appropriate, once they have a plan, take that to the Darby Accord panel. This is just, here's four acres that might become something. What are they going to tell them? Can you follow the, follow the goals? So once you have a plan in place that shows a layout, then I think that's more appropriate to take to the Darby Accord panel.
But it'll also get planning and zoning.
Yes, it'll go, so once they, if this gets approved, for example, and this, and this site gets zoned to the H C D, the next application would have to be something that says, we want to take, we want to take that site and develop it into something. And that's the plan that will go to the Darby Accord first, then Planning Commission, and then potentially here, depending if they have to change things.
Peggy?
I think you just clarified. Tonight, we're just voting on the land use. We're not, or that it's going to be rezoned. We're not voting on gas stations. We're not voting on what it's going to be, just the land.
Correct. Is it, is the appropriate zoning district for this acreage, the H C D district, is what you're voting on?
Cynthia?
Is there a point where we are required to notify, like, surrounding residents? And would that be when the actual gas station comes through?
Well, yes, but this one was as well, so we-
Oh, this one was?
Yes, each, yeah, each, this rezoning application, there were notification letters sent out, and then any subsequent one will also have those requirements.
Okay, thank you.
I have one quick comment. The thing with this Alton Place, and I wasn't on council when it was initially passed, but they just keep having changes, little incremental changes, something else changes, something else changes. It's like, you know, I can make some bad analogy, but that makes me uncomfortable, because this is okay, but then what's the next one? And what's the next one? I just wanted to put that out there. Anyone else? Okay, thank you, John. Thanks. Second reading public hearing on ordinance twenty-five dash twenty-three will be September twenty-second, 2025. Dee, will you please read ordinance twenty-five dash twenty-four by title only?
Accepting the mountain rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor.
Would a council member like to sponsor and second?
So moved.
Second. Greg?
Good evening, members of council. This is a routine piece of legislation that we do every year at this time. The city is required to certify the tax levy to the county auditor by October first. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? No? Okay, no questions. Second reading public hearing on ordinance twenty-five dash twenty-four will be September twenty-second, 2025. That's the last of our ordinances. We will now move on to resolutions. Dee, will you please read Resolution twenty-five R sixty-six by title only?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a professional services agreement with Burgess and Nyipal, Inc. for the Old Hilliard Sanitary Sewer Evaluation Study, C I P S forty-six, and authorizing an expenditure of funds.
Thank you. Would a council member like to sponsor and adopt?
I'll move.
Second.
Staff report, Letty?
Hi, good evening, members of city council. This legislation before you tonight is pertaining to sanitary sewer evaluation study in Old Hilliard. While we typically talk about Old Hilliard, it actually impacts the entire Hilliard Outfall Trunk Sanitary Sewer that basically carries all the sanitary sewer from the Old Hilliard District, as well as all of our pre-World War II neighborhoods and development along Cemetery Road, and basically takes it to Columbus. So this is our oldest sanitary sewer system, mostly made up of old clay tiles. If you recall, about a year ago, there was a study, Burgess and Nyipal came in to talk to city council about the findings of a preliminary study with Clark Roush, and we talked a little bit about wet weather and dry weather events within this sewer shed. They did a lot of monitoring of our sanitary sewer system. Unfortunately, during dry weather events, there's plenty of capacity within the sewer system to accommodate current flows and future flows for that matter. But during wet weather events, we're starting to reach capacity, and this is also viol-, I shouldn't say a violation, dealing with what is called as I N I, infiltration and inflow, is something that's really important in terms of our findings and orders that came to us from Ohio EPA back in 2009, I believe it is. So we are required to address I N I in our sanitary sewer system, and this is one really important step to do that. So what this study will be, it's a two-part study, and we are proposing, the first step will be to do a lot of education and outreach with residents, particularly those in Old Hilliard, sending out surveys and questionnaires to try to get a little bit more information on what they know about their properties, any issues that they may have had with water in basements, or any other events that would be concerning with respect to sanitary sewer overflows. So we'll take that information and also kind of combine it with some records review, G I S review of our existing sanitary sewers to try to identify where the, where the biggest problems potentially are in Old Hilliard. From there, we will move into Phase Two, and the scope of Phase Two will be developed based on the findings of Phase One, but that will probably include some work on private property, which would include some smoke testing and dye testing of our sanitary sewers. So one of the outcomes of this study would be potentially changes in our city code to allow the city of Hilliard to go on to private property to potentially line sanitary sewers, the laterals that go from people's homes, and also install cleanouts, as well as lining some of our manholes and sanitary sewer lines throughout the Old Hilliard area and throughout the sewer shed, which is somewhat what we have been doing in the past anyway, but to a much greater extent. So what is before you here tonight is basically the legislation authorizing us to enter into this contract with B N N, authorizing the expenditure of $200,000 for Phase One of the study, and give us the opportunity to extend this professional service agreement in future years, subject to the appropriation of funds by city council, which we'll be putting in the capital budget. So I'm happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Any questions?
Letty, what's the difference between this study and the study we already did?
So the study that we already did really looked at flow monitoring in the sanitary sewer system, which got us the information that we have today. The previous study also included evaluation of other utilities in Old Hilliard, which also included water lines and storm sewers.
Okay. And will this study, when it's complete, tell us how much more capacity we can gain from doing the things that the city wants to do?
No. Well, this study will not tell us how much capacity we would have. This study would identify where we should start in terms of lining sanitary sewer mains, manholes, and laterals to help to address I N I in the most efficient and effective way.
And when you address I N I, you're basically increasing the capacity of the system for dedicated flows versus the stuff that leaks in, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So my last question surrounding this is, we're going to go on to private property, redo some of the laterals, put in catch basins. Are we also cutting off the downspouts that go in after we do the smoke study to identify those and cut those off?
If they exist, yes. But to clarify, no catch basins. Catch basins are for storm water flow. We would be doing sanitary sewers. But yes, if we identify that there are, I hate to say illegal, because back when they were installed, they probably were not illegal, but if we identify private storm water connections to our sanitary sewer system, those would be addressed at the same time.
And then, how are we going to handle where the water went before and where it's going to go then?
So if there are, say, downspouts, roof drains that go into the sanitary sewer, they would have to get rerouted out to the storm sewer system, so separate it. I guess in general, if we found a storm water connection to the sanitary sewer, it would somehow need to get redirected to the storm system. That could potentially be, if they've got a sump pump already, it could be directed into that because the sump pumps pump storm water, not sanitary water.
And so are we on the, is the taxpayer going to pay for all that redesign and movement too?
Yes, if city council authorizes us to do that as part of code amendments.
Okay. And when do you expect those to come along?
We would probably bring those to city council. I would anticipate towards the end of next year or the beginning of 2027.
And we're doing this in Wayne Street in an effort to redesign the flows so we can increase capacity, correct? Eventually, that's what's really going. I mean, they need to be done anyway, correct?
I mean, actually, it's for existing residents. Yes, it will allow for increased capacity, but it's really to address an existing problem with I N I regardless of what was happening anywhere else in the watershed, in the sewer shed.
But it will increase capacity, correct?
It will free up during wet weather events, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Peggy?
Hi, this is just an easy one. So is this study also to determine, like, if the pipe widths are large enough to handle, you know, development that could be considered from the community plan?
No, typically, so the existing sanitary sewers during dry weather events have sufficient capacity to meet our current and planned future demands.
Oh.
So it's just the issue of the storm water getting into the sanitary sewer during wet weather events.
So the width of the pipes would potentially, once we reline them and fix them, would be sufficient for wet weather events, for what's planned in the city plan?
And right, correct. So whenever you design a sanitary sewer system, you have to look at the larger sewer shed and you size your pipes accordingly. So even back when these were installed in the nineteen fifty's, sixty's, whatever, they would have used a similar design criteria in designing the size and the slopes and that sort of thing of the sanitary sewers to accommodate the entire sewer shed. The problem is now water, what, you know, storm water is getting into those sewers, which decreases the capacity.
That makes sense. So, yeah, so they were forward-thinking whenever they were putting them in.
Just standard, standard design for sanitary sewers.
That brought up a good point, if I may. What, if we do the study and they say we got, because it's all kind of laid there in where Old Hilliard is, and then it all flows towards Conklin and those neighborhoods on down the rail, right?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Were we required to redo some of that stuff, to make bigger pipes for accommodating that?
No, there would be no need to change the size of any of the sanitary sewers within that sewer shed. It's just a matter of sealing them so that storm water can't get in.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions, Cynthia?
Just a confirmation. So this is looking at 10,000 feet of pipes, right?
Oh, more than that.
Or more than that, right, so-
Significantly more than that.
So it's going into the neighboring old neighborhoods to ensure that they're not going to be getting flooding and things like that, so-
Correct.
There's a wide swath of people, whoops, sorry, who are going to be benefiting from this study.
Absolutely, yes. And it, I mean, the sewer shed, like I said, covers not only, we're going to be starting in Old Hilliard because that's where the sewers are the oldest, but we will also be investigating later on, carrying this into potentially, if we don't address with what we're doing in Old Hilliard, if it does not reduce the I N I significantly, we could potentially be doing some of the same sort of things in some of the older neighborhoods, the Avories, the Colonial Lanes, Conklin, you know, those neighborhoods as well. But we're starting here in Old Hilliard. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, Letty.
Thank you.
Dee, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Ms. Vermillion.
Yes.
President Cottone.
Yes.
Mr. Carrier.
Yes.
Vice President Teeter.
Yes.
Ms. Hale.
Yes.
Past six zero.
Resolution twenty-five R sixty-six has passed and is in effect at the earliest date allowable by law. Dee, would you please read Resolution twenty-five R sixty-seven by title only?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a professional services agreement with Arcadis U S, Inc. for the Cos Gray Road Jeffrey Lynn Drive Hoffman Farms Drive Intersection Improvement, C I P T one seventy-one, formerly known as C I P T eighty-four, and authorizing an expenditure of funds.
Thank you. Letty?
Nope.
Would a council member like to sponsor and adopt?
So moved.
Now, Letty, thank you.
Thank you. You should all be very familiar with this project. This proposes to install a single-lane roundabout at the intersection of Cos Gray, Jeffrey Lynn, and Hoffman Farms Drive. This project has been in our C I P for a number of years, and with the passage of the Hill Farm Two Development Agreement and the rezoning for those properties, the developer committed to, I believe, $370,000 towards different phases of this project. So that's what jump-started this project. We included $150,000 in the capital budget amendment that city council passed back in July. And basically, this legislation authorizes us to enter into a design contract to, for, with Arcadis. The total amount is $629,400, but this just authorizes the expenditure of $150,000, which was in the budget amendment. The balance of these funds will be included in either the twenty-six or the twenty-seven capital improvement budget. So this authorizes that contract, the expenditure of the funds, and the, the extension of the contract in future years. Any other questions?
Does anyone have any questions?
What's the total for that roundabout, Letty?
The cost?
Yep.
I'm guessing it's for the construction cost, probably in the $2 million range, a little more than two, 2.2-ish.
Is there any way we can do it all at one time and compress the cycle to get it built and get it over with?
You mean when we go to construction, close the intersection?
If bulldozers come in, can we just shut it down, get it done, get it up and running again?
Potentially.
Can we get a proposal to do that?
Well, to clarify, this is for the design. Once the design is complete, we will bid it out for construction. If the decision is made that we want to compress the schedule and get it done under full closure rather than trying to maintain traffic, which is, would probably make the most sense for this particular project, we would include that as part of the bidder requirements for maintenance of traffic on the project, so.
Yes, I'd like to see it both ways and what the cost difference is, because it can get kind of arduous to have to, you know, it just creates more havoc.
Yeah, generally because we're somewhat limited on right-of-way to try to maintain traffic through there. What we found on particularly these, these single-lane roundabouts, it'd be really hard to maintain traffic through it. You're really better off to close it. The contractors can get them done quickly. If you recall how we had to build the, build the Cos Gray Sayota Darby Road roundabout, we committed to keeping that open, and it was like putting a puzzle together, and it was very complicated. It costs more, it took longer, and it was hard to communicate to the public what was happening and what was changing. So while I cannot tell you yet, because it hasn't been designed, if maintaining traffic is an option, but my recommendation would generally be to close it down and get it done and rip the Band-Aid off as quickly as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Dee, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Vermillion.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Ms. Hale. President Cottone.
Yes.
Vice President Teeter.
Yes.
Mr. Carrier.
Yes.
Past six zero.
Thank you. Resolution twenty-five R sixty-seven has passed and is in effect at the earliest date allowable by law. Dee, will you please read Resolution twenty-five R sixty-eight by title only?
Authorizing the city manager to modify an existing professional services agreement with Morton, with A. Morton Thomas and Associates, Inc. for the Lacon Road Culvert Replacement, C I P T dash one seventy-two, formerly known as C I P S T dash forty-four, and authorizing an expenditure of funds.
Thank you. Would a council member like to sponsor and adopt?
So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Last one. This is a modification of an existing professional services agreement to complete the design of a culvert replacement on Lacon Road. This is where Tudor Ditch goes underneath, underneath Lacon. It's south of Cemetery Road and north of Beacon Elementary School, Edgewind, that area. So we have done some preliminary engineering, looked at alternatives, selected the alternative that we think is the best based on the age and the condition of the existing infrastructure- of the existing infrastructure as well as cost. And we're recommending that we move forward with the design of a replacement of the existing structure with a box culvert with half-height head walls. This would require full closure of Lacon Road when it is built. When that happens, we will be coordinating to do it during the summertime when school is not in session. So this authorizes the design contract and an expenditure of $130,881 for that purpose. Questions?
Does anyone have any questions for Letty? You okay? You okay? All right. All right, thank you. Dee, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Vermillion?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Ms. Hale? Vice President Teeter?
Yes.
President Cottone?
Yes.
Pass six zero.
Thank you. Resolution 25R68 is passed and is in effect at the earliest date allowable by law. Dee, will you please read Resolution 25R69 by title only?
Approving changes to the Alton Place Hilliard Conservation District HCD Development Plan for 31.92 plus or minus acres located at the northwest corner of Bridgeview Trace and Alton Darby Road to modify the boundaries of subarea R5 and C6 for 123 single-family dwelling units and to modify the HCD development text to permit horizontal siding on side and rear elevations.
Thank you. Dee, would a council member like to sponsor and adopt?
Second.
Thank you. John?
Thanks. Dee, do you have?
Yep.
I have to do the. That one, I think. I think. I have to let go of mine. John? That's good, right there. So this proposal is to modify the Alton Place HCD boundaries for subarea R5. So in the far-left image, you can see the subject site where Onyx and East wants to do their development. And it's, it's all within R5 district except for the small purple area. So in the middle section, middle image, you can see there's a portion of subarea C6 that's north of Bridgeview Trace, that road. And their proposal is the far-right image is to put all of that area north of Bridgeview Trace into the R5 subarea. Makes for an easier boundary for them and. Okay. So that's the main change for this. The proposal got approved was for 123 single-family units. Well, I guess they have some townhouse units and some single-family. So this portion of it, because it doesn't cover all of subarea R5, as you can see in the far-left image, there is still some additional development potential for that, for that portion of it. But the applicant is proposing this subarea change, and then they're also proposing, this is kind of shows the layout. In the farther, far-south end, you can see some narrower lots. Those are the townhouses, similar to the Carr Farms development where they have mostly single-family detached, but there were some townhouse units in there, similar idea here. Now, let me get to the end of this one, and then the proposed, this is the proposed change to the development text. It really is to allow horizontal siding on the side and rear elevations only. Right now, horizontal siding is only allowed as an accent, and they require board and batten or like the shingle-type siding. And this would, this would just permit it in, on sides and rear more than an accent. So it's really those two issues. Any questions recommended for both of these? Do you have questions about either of those items?
Does anyone have any questions?
You can go first, that's fine.
Dee, can you move us back to the pictures? You know, I like pictures.
Oh, I got the picture.
Clicker. Back to the little, where the little water ponds are, the retention ponds. So that ditch goes right through there to the west, correct?
The Hamilton, yes, Hamilton is.
And all these little ponds show up in here. I thought that's all supposed to go run to that ditch. Isn't that what them ditches are designed for, take that runoff?
Well, ultimately, yeah, but before you can leave this site, you have to have, before it can leave the overall site and dump it, just dump it into the Hamilton, they've got to let it cool off, it's got to, there's quality controls and quantity controls on the site before it leaves the site. So these ponds are what's going to be required to handle the storm water on their site before it goes into the stream.
Those are new, correct?
Those will be new, yes.
They weren't there before?
They're not there now, correct.
They weren't there with what we approved?
They, well.
First time.
Well, most of the ponds weren't there before, when it was approved with the rezoning, but they were, they were, what's that?
When they designed it, it came to us, all these little ponds weren't in there.
That's correct.
Okay.
Because they, exactly. Because development wasn't proposed, they didn't know where those would be.
I just remembered, I thought they were going to make a, one big one.
Yeah, that's, that is, that is south of this site, so, yeah, so.
It's still there.
Let me, yeah, so back, so on the far-left image.
Got it.
This area, yeah, that is, that is still planned, that is still required until somebody makes a change to that.
I'm just curious, because I thought those ditches were designed to take that runoff and designed in a way that flattens it out and does the filtration and all that other stuff.
Because in a sense, isn't that what the Darby wants, is more of that and less of these retention ponds?
Well, not necessarily. What they want is storm water control to meet the requirements of the, not only ours, but the state requirements.
State, okay.
Thank you.
Cynthia?
Thank you. So it looks like with the new change, there would be 25 less single-family homes, correct? Which.
Hang on a second. There will be less, there will be less. So you may, you may remember this. When they did their original zoning, there were, there was a table that showed the different types of housing, and in some of them was a range. So there was a range of each of the different type of houses in the text. So for example, if they, if the brownstone-style house was selling real well and they wanted to do more of them, they had the ability to go up to a certain number. But if you went, if you looked at the total of the, the maximum number of all the different house types, it would be more than they would be allowed. So if they, if one got higher, the other ones have to get lower, so they're in that range. But in the, let me, in the original plan for R5, this portion, or not this portion, the total R5 area, which would be the, the, on the, on the left image, the entire light blue portion, which is basically here, except for this little purple part right there, total of 187 attached urban housing units, and that was courtyard, brownstone, townhome, or row house, and then 14 single-family lots. So this proposal is 123 total, 34 townhouse, and 89 detached single-family.
Okay. We, are they going to need more taps, I guess?
No, so this is within the, this is within the current, what was approved, the 439 approved for Alton Place. There is a separate application working its way through that's proposing to a lot of additional taps. If that's what you're talking about, that's not this one. This is, this is only within what's currently allowed.
Right, yeah, I knew that was separate. But I just wanted to confirm that no new taps on this one.
Correct.
Okay. And then on the siding, I guess I'm wondering why the change suddenly on the horizontal? Because when we were shown everything back in 2020, you know, everything looked beautiful, beautiful exteriors, all that. Are we going to go toward cheaper kind of exteriors, or?
I don't think so. The, the, the home builder is a good home builder, they, but it's, this is their request because they do more of the horizontal in their types. So they, you have some, I think, examples in your, in the pack, and I think there's some on this. And it's, and they're, so this is their, so yeah, so on that, this is one of the townhouse units. So yeah, they would not be able to do with this proposal this horizontal siding on the front, except for accents. But the side and rear, they could do more of the horizontal siding. So when you look at these types of, this front would not have horizontal siding on it except for maybe an accent somewhere. Same with all these, I mean, it's not going to change much. I think it's just a different look that they, that they have. It's still going to be, whether you're doing hardy plank on horizontal siding or hardy plank, board and batten, I don't know how much that changes your cost. I don't know if it does, but it's just the look that they liked with their specific house types.
Well, you mentioned hardy plank, and I would be fine with, with the hardy plank, but vinyl is part of this. It's, it's allowed, so.
It's allowed currently. The only change they're making is on, is on the thing.
Correct, correct, but, so I'm wondering if they are planning on doing kind of boring vinyl horizontal siding, you know, house after house after house. That would be my only concern. When we thought we were getting this beautiful variety of exteriors and it's going to look super cool and, so I do have a problem with that, I guess, because I'm not sure what the ultimate goal is here.
Normally, when we have siding, when you have architectural details, if you allow wood or composite board siding, like a hardy plank product, you allow their full line, horizontal, board and batten, shake type. So for whatever reason, this was not included in the original one. We didn't say, hey, what about the horizontal? It's like, they're proposing what they wanted. We had no problem with what they proposed. If they would have proposed including horizontal siding in the beginning, we wouldn't have had a problem with that either, but.
But we don't have a limitation on vinyl siding, right? They could do 100% vinyl siding.
I don't know, I don't know. They could do 100%. I mean, if you can do 100% horizontal vinyl, you can do shake vinyl all over. I don't know if they can do all of the, I don't know if they can make it all vinyl.
Again, my only point is, we were presented this lovely picture of, you know, nice-looking row houses and townhomes and things, and my only concern would be that now we're going to end up with house after house of just boring vinyl siding.
I don't think you're going to get vinyl on this. I think their main material is the composite board.
But it's allowed, so you can't say that because it's allowed. Right?
Doesn't say vinyl.
Vinyl's.
Does not say vinyl.
Vinyl's allowed as a vertical board and batten or a vinyl shake currently. They're not proposing any changes to that.
I see that, okay.
So 9.4224 vinyl siding, that can only be done as an accent? Is that what you're saying?
No, the board and, the vinyl siding has to be board and batten or it has to be shake siding. Can't be horizontal vinyl siding.
It cannot be horizontal vinyl siding?
Correct.
Where do I see that on here?
You don't, where do you see horizontal vinyl siding is permitted?
I just see vinyl siding is permitted.
You got to read the whole sentence. Vinyl siding, vertical board and batten, vinyl side, vinyl shake siding. Those are, vinyl shake siding, it looks like individual shakes, like you'd have a, like a cedar shake, but it's a vinyl product. That, those are specific to board and batten being vinyl instead of composite board or wood and shake being vinyl instead of composite wood, but it has to be, it doesn't allow, if they wanted to have vinyl horizontal siding, they would have to have a third line that says vinyl horizontal siding. It is not, it is not a permitted material on that list.
Okay. Sorry, that's, that's not how I initially read it, so.
So on the, on the top, it says, so the list that they're saying is wood, board and batten, composite board and batten, cedar shake siding. Those are the, that's not vinyl, that's the real material.
Okay.
Limited horizontal siding may be permitted as accents on the front, subject discretion of the Architecture Review Committee. Horizontal siding is permitted on side and rear elevations, rear elevations only, but that's the siding, that's not vinyl siding.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for clarifying.
Sure.
Thanks.
Yep.
Watch your mic.
Ah, okay. I think I understand the siding part. I still am not sure what we're voting on.
Sure.
What we're voting on, what the change is.
Oh, so the change would be to say, this purple part here, we don't want it to be in C6 anymore, we want it to be in R5, just like everything else in that blue. So.
Why?
Because, because there are different, subarea C6 is a commercial subarea. It'll, they want this to be their housing, and it's, and back in the original plan, there was some thought that, that some of those uses in the C6 might be appropriate on that side to create that both sides of the street type of thing. But with this developer, they don't want that, and they want to make this just their entire development.
So we're not increasing any units?
No.
The whole project, on the whole Alton Place project?
That's correct.
Are we losing commercial units?
No.
Okay.
No.
One thing I'd add, it goes to Councilwoman Vermillion's discussion, is when they first penciled this project out, it's been what, 2020 since we started down this journey? The homes were 400,000. They're putting homes in there over a million, too. So this whole thing, and that kind of goes to President Cottone's concern about the changes. I think you're seeing the change in that market out there so drastically that the whole thing's going to change. I think that's partly why they're coming back for more taps, because they have more capacity and they had the acreage. I wouldn't be surprised to see more acreage added in this project or attempted to be added in it from the north before it's over. There's another sliver that runs right between there and then the Heritage Preserve, correct?
There is, but that's not part of the proposal on that other application. But yeah, there's, there are several undeveloped parcels north of this.
North and west, between Bradley and here, too, right?
Correct, yes.
So that's all coming with those new 1,300 taps. You can, you can bet on it, so, anyway, thanks.
Any comment or question? I understand now that you've walked through everything the changes, but I just want to echo President Cottone's former concerns so that you can share them with the applicant that even this change from subarea C6 to subarea R5 seems to be a continued departure from walkability. My understanding was part of the reason there was a commercial piece within the neighborhood was to encourage that walkability, including through the neighborhood and the commercial use. And it's just pretty disappointing to see this continually change and the goalposts move on the purpose and the goals of this project. So I understand the change. It's encouraging to hear that won't affect commercial at this time, and I've sat in the planning and zoning meeting where they took a building that was supposed to house four commercial tenants and condensed it to two, one a dentist and one an orthodontist. And I personally don't like to walk around after I go to the dentist, so I'm just emphasizing that it's disappointing, given how this project was promised. Thank you.
I have a similar comment. And so it, it sounds like there will be a lot fewer. I, I have a similar comment, Ed, so, it, it sounds like there will be a lot fewer homes than there were, because they were going to be, you, you mentioned a number of townhomes and other type that are being replaced with a smaller number of single-family homes, right?
Well, smaller number for this portion of the R5 district, so, there's still, if you look at the image on the left, there's still area north of the subject site that is zoned for residential.
Which is not changing.
Not with this application.
Okay, that does not negate the fact that the other one is changing, though, I just wanted to share that.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Anyone else, questions? Okay, thank you very much. Dee, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Vice President Teeter?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
President Cottone?
Yes.
Ms. Vermillion?
Yes.
Pass six zero.
Thank you, resolution 25R69 has passed and is in effect at the earliest date allowable by law. Dee, will you please read resolution 25R70 by title only?
Authorizing the city manager to expend funds for participation in the Midwest Connect Two, Step Two Corridor Identification Process.
Thank you, would a council member like to sponsor and adopt?
So moved.
Second. Staff report?
Good evening, members of council, pleased to present this legislation for your consideration that would authorize $50,000 to be allocated toward the Step Two Corridor ID process for passenger rail. This is for the Midwest Connect Line that would run from Pittsburgh through Columbus up to Fort Wayne and ultimately to Chicago. That Step One process has come to a conclusion, and they're waiting for formal authorization for Step Two from the Federal Rail Administration. FRA pays about 90% of the expense of the corridor study, the other 10% is the obligation of local entities. This is being spread across the state of Indiana and Ohio among municipalities that are looking, along the corridor, that are looking to potentially be station locations. So Columbus, Dublin, Mary, are all participating in the state of Ohio, and at similar levels to what's being suggested here tonight. The, the Step Two processes where details like the overall train speed, the frequency of train travel, and then ultimately the station locations are selected, and so, participating in this part of the process is really important for Hilliard to maintain its strong position, I think, we have with land at both sides of the CSX line, to become a future passenger rail station location.
Thank you. Council have any questions or comments?
I'd asked this of City Manager Crandall a while back and didn't get a response. What all, how much is the taxpayer Hilliard in for this rail line so far? We got the land on both sides we bought, what's that get us up? That's what, a million, 700,000?
I'd be happy to put those numbers together, we, we acquired that one property on the west side, I think, what, a couple of years ago, the land behind Giant Eagle, I think, was part of a development agreement, I'm not sure that there was a direct cost as part of that.
Okay, and how many of these steps have we paid for, do you know? This, I guess this would be a second one, so we paid for the first one, were we in for 50 on the first one?
We were not, the Step One was done through funding that was secured through the city of Fort Wayne ultimately.
Oh, wow.
And then coordinated with Morpsey.
How many more steps are left, do you know how much we're gonna put into the kitty before this is all over?
The remaining steps are really ones that are dependent upon funding from the Federal Rail Administration. The question for entities that are chosen for station locations will be our participation from a capital perspective in the construction of the station, and ultimately, as my understanding is that that is a, typically a shared cost between FRA and the local municipality, but there would be a cost depending on the total for the station construction that would be our obligation.
And does FRA have the funding to go forward with the rail line, or is it still just, we're hoping and crossing our fingers that the feds pass out the money?
Well, their, their budget under what was proposed, and President Trump's budget actually went up, and everything that we've been told to date is that they continue to have funding for this program. That question has been asked very directly.
Okay, good, might be on something, thanks.
Anyone else, any questions? Okay, Dee, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Vermillion?
Yes.
President Cottone?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Vice President Teeter?
Yes.
Ms. Hale?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Pass six zero.
Resolution 25R70 has passed and is in effect at the earliest date allowable by law. Dee, will you please read resolution 25R71 by title only?
Yes, ma'am, before I would read, like to read this, there is a scrivener error that was noted in the legislation itself, Mr. Armentano's name was spelled incorrectly, it has been corrected for the signed version.
Thank you.
Appointing members to the Housing Steering Committee.
Would a council member like to sponsor and adopt?
So moved.
Second. Okay. All right, is there any staff report required here? All right, any questions?
I have one, is it normal for a housing study to come post the comp plan?
I'm not sure if "normal" is the right way to phrase it, but it's going to be able to provide us more detailed analysis, both of the housing market, but also potentially some recommendations that are consistent with the comp plan, but maybe specific implementation strategies, for example.
But normally, you would see a housing study before you'd see a comp plan, as people undertake the process, correct? I mean, that's what my research showed, I just want to make sure that I understand it right.
I'm not sure that I would agree with that, communities do it different ways, but the comp plan is really the big picture of what we want our community to look like in the future, and in this case, the housing study is, is following that and maybe offering a more detailed analysis and, and recommendations that are consistent with the comp plan.
So are we gonna hold off on the other zoning corridors before, till the housing study's completed?
That, I think, is a reasonable assumption, I think that the housing study may inform some of the elements of the code updates that we want to make.
Didn't you just answer my question that we should have done the housing study before we did the code changes or made the plan?
No, I mean, I think the, the zoning code updates are consistent with the comp plan, and those five focus areas that were part of that, in this case.
So, but delaying those makes the argument that you should have done the housing study first more palatable, because what you've done, we've already, we've already zoned two corridors, so now if the housing study comes back and says, oh, we want this, or we need this there, right? Or if we want, you see what I'm saying? It seems to me we're steering it in a, in a cart before the horse. We zoned 12 stories, 150 feet down the highway, and out in a cemetery corridor, five stories in infill, as a secondary protocol, but now we're asking the community to give input on the housing types we want, when we've already zoned it. To me, it seems to me it's backwards, just my sense for what it's worth.
Is there, is there a reason that you brought this up, is there something you want to change or do, or is this?
Oh, I, I think it's too late, you've already zoned the ISET 270 corridor, and you've zoned the Darby Accord, and you've already put the zoning overlays in place, but now, you, you're going back to the community and saying, oh, we want your input, and I think, again, it's too late, especially in those two corridors.
Right, so that was my question, is there, what was the point of the question, I guess?
It was, I'll hate that we did the cart before the horse, absolutely.
All right, thank you, any other comments? Okay, Dee, would you please call the roll?
Since there was a tie for the second, so we're just gonna, we're just gonna go with what I got. Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Ms. Hale? Ms. Vermillion?
Yes.
President Cottone?
Yes.
Mr. Carrier? Vice President Teeter?
Yes.
Pass six zero.
Thank you, resolution 25R71 has passed and is in effect at the earliest date allowable by law. That concludes the legislative portion of this meeting, President's communication, a reminder that we have the rededication to First Responders Park this Thursday, the 11th, and is that, Chief Woods, is that at nine? Okay, so, anyone that wants to go, be good to go, and then we have the grand opening of the well on September 18th, and that starts at 5:30 PM, so hopefully everybody can be there for that. Okay. Staff, it's Mr. Rowley, do you have any updates?
Just to mention to council, and President Cottone and I attended a meeting, we were the host of the Central Ohio Mayors and Managers, which was the first public meeting in the well. It is a fabulous feeling to watch the faces of people as they walk into this building and, and really, I think, look on in amazement with what has been constructed, and I think all of you will be experiencing that firsthand here as we go through various soft openings and the ribbon-cutting ceremony on the 18th of September, but it's a really, really great accomplishment that you should all feel proud of.
Thank you, Mr. Rowley.
I would like to add our thanks to the city staff that have been working countless hours out there to make sure we hit the opening, it's, their work has not gone unnoticed, and it's very appreciated.
I, I'll, real quick, I got to see the, the space where the things that were done in the senior center will be done in, in the well, and I was, frankly, I was worried about it, because, you know, people are nervous, and they were complaining, I was afraid it was gonna be too small, and when I got in there and I walked into one specific room, and somebody explained to me that this is where coffee chat will be, I honestly, I started to cry, because it was so beautiful, and there's just a wall of windows, and it opens into a kitchen, and I, I said, this is what I always pictured, and so, I, I couldn't help it, it was just so lovely, it really exceeded my expectations, so. All right, thank you, Dee, do you have clerk of council update?
Exciting, report number two. The nonprofit grant program applications close on 8/31, the finance director and I will be meeting next Monday to go over, finalize the final list for council to review and discussion in October. September 18th, I will be attending an OMCA One Day Academy on Law and Ethics in the Age of AI in Tip City, so I'll be out of the office, but always available if you need me, that's it.
Thank you. Does council have any other items for discussion? Emily?
Yes, I just wanted to flag that it's National Suicide Awareness Week, and so, if anyone is struggling with mental health, you can always call 988, that's actually available now statewide, which is new and very exciting, so you would call 988 and be connected to trained clinicians, peer supporters, social workers, and operators to support, both for you or for your loved one or community member, and just wanted to share that, and also share that I'm happy to connect folks to resources, mental health is very dear and near to my heart, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cole, anyone else?
Yes, ma'am. I'd ask the administration, we're coming up on the CIP and the operating budget this fall, can you get us, by the way, thank you for those little notes ahead of time, they are awesome, very helpful to us, I already know it is to me, anyway, can we get a timeline of what you're looking at for the budget and everything, and start getting that data?
Sure.
I don't like to start getting it in mid-October and try to crunch everything in, I like to have some time to process it.
That's fine, I'd be happy to share that information.
What the timeline's, are we gonna have any special meetings from it that you know of?
We'll at least have presentations at a work session, essentially, so we've got some dedicated time, similar to what we've done in previous years for the budget.
Yeah, I'd like to get that date and lock it down, because it's gonna be fluid here very soon, thanks.
Okay, anyone else? All right, I would entertain a motion in a second to recess to executive session with no business to follow for matters pertaining to conferences with an attorney for council concerning disputes involving council that are the subject of pending or imminent court action, Charter Section 2.101(c) for Mr. Boggs' request. So moved. Thank you, Dee, will you please call the roll?
I would like to know that Mr. Betts just arrived at 7:23, so he'll be involved in this.
Did you just rock in right now?
He just snuck in.
Okay.
Stealth.
I just announced it, sorry, Greg. Ms. Vermillion?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Betts?
Yes.
President Cottone?
Yes.
Vice President Teeter? Mr. Carrier?
Yes.
Ms. Hale? You're recessed.
Thank you, for the people here, we, when we come back out, we will have no more business to discuss, so. Thank you.